Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Navs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundis is absent.
Four members here, one absent. At this time, will all, would you all please rise for invocation from Pastor Tyler Jones? Morning Pastor. Thank you for coming.
I hear his with me. Father, we just thank you for this meeting. We thank you for the Board of Supervisors, and I just pray peace over the board and over everyone in attendance, my God, and I just thank you that in you, your power is made perfect in our weakness, my God. So wherever we fall in our limitations, God, let your power be known and felt, and just bring peace to every mind and heart, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. It's followed me with slither nation's flag. Ready? Salute. Okay, so we'll go on now to item two, unscheduled appearances. Do we have anybody with the written comments?
I have no written correspondence, and no one has filled out speaker card, and no one online has their hand raised.
We. Or hold your peace forever now. Anybody in the audience like to have anything they want to say? Merry Christmas, happy New Year. Be nice to your family members. Oh, we got a hand raised. Dang. David? Shark?
Hi, good, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Shark. I'm a Public Information Officer with the United States Small Business Administration. And as part of our outreach related to the Burrell Fire in Kern County, we want to make aware to the Board of Supervisors and your constituents that residents of Kings County may be eligible for economic injury disaster loans through the SBA. So I just want to drop some contact information if people are interested in more information. They can contact DisasterCustomerService@sb.gov. They can call one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. Or they can go to our website at sba.gov/disaster. When I say these loans are low interest, I mean it. We're talking about four percent for businesses and small agricultural cooperatives, and as low as three point two five for nonprofit organizations. We do have a disaster loan outreach center in Kern County set up at the Isabella Senior Center. That's for people that would like in-person assistance with the loan application. But again, I think the best route for people in Kings County would be to email DisasterCustomerService@sb.gov or call one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. Thanks, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll go to item three, approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from regular meeting, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nez. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes. Four members in favor, one absent. And at this time, we'll go to consent counter. All items listed on consent counter are listed as one motion unless a supervisor would like to pull any item on his own. Nope.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Valley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Just for clarification, that is as amended. We did have one item that was removed and placed as regular.
Correct.
Thank you.
As amended.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes. Okay, four in favor, one absent. Now we're going to go to regular calendar, and we have item A, Human Resource Department. Melissa, good morning.
Good morning. Morning Chairman, members of the board. Melissa Avalos, Human Resource Manager for Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend that the board approve the First Amendment for a three-year contract extension with NFP Retirement Incorporated for administrative services for the county's deferred compensation plan effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. The Deferred Comp Committee voted on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four to recommend to this board that this agreement for consulting services be extended for a three-year term to provide ongoing assistance with the plan's administration, including the monitoring and recommendation of the plan's investment offerings. The committee is appointed by the board and is comprised of five voting members, the Department of Finance Director, Assistant Director of Finance Treasury, County Administrative Officer, Human Resources Director, or their designees, and a retiree representative. The county council serves as an ex officio non-voting member. The county is authorized to implement a deferred compensation plan pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code and has instituted a four fifty-seven plan for its employees. The county has contracted with NFP Retirement Incorporated, formerly known as SST Benefit Consulting, since October twenty-two thousand and one for the purpose of providing consultant services to the committee. NFP assists with the administration of the plan, including but not limited to investment options, investment performance evaluation, requests for proposals from third-party plan providers, and other matters related to the plan. On January first, two thousand and nineteen, the board approved a contract between the county and NFP. The committee was informed during a meeting held on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, that the county's agreement with NFP is set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The agreement may be extended for an additional three-year term upon the recommendation of the committee to the board. The committee recommended that human sources, human resources bring this agreement to the board to extend the contract for an additional three-year term, which would end on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. This contract has been reviewed and approved by county council as to the form and risk for compliance with safety and liability standards. Fiscal impact, there was none to the county, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Any question or comments? Motion by Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
Okay, four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. Melissa Avalos, Human Resource Manager. I'm here today to recommend that the board approve the salary recommendations for the Account Clerk One, Animal Shelter Technician Trainee, Central Services Operator One, Community Health Assistant One, Legal Clerk One, Library Assistant One, Nutrition Assistance One, and Office Assistance One to increase the salary range to range one fifty-seven point zero, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, which is pay period one of two thousand and twenty-five, in accordance with the California Minimum Wage Increase. Also approve the salary adjustment for peer support specialists and set the salary at range one sixty-five point five, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, pay period one, two thousand and twenty-five, in accordance with Senate Bill five two five. Approve the job specification of medical office receptionist and set the salary at range one sixty-five point five, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, which is pay period one, two thousand and twenty-five, in accordance with Senate Bill five twenty-five. Approve the revised and consolidated job specification of medical assistant and set the salary at range one seventy-five point five, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, which is pay period one, two thousand and twenty-five, in accordance with Senate Bill five twenty-five, and approve the salary resolution, which reflects the salary changes as recommended. The salary resolution was recently approved by the board on December third, two thousand and twenty-four, to reflect negotiated MOU agreement, agreements with various bargaining units, classification and compensation changes, the addition and deletion of positions, and the cost of living increase and benefit changes for all represents unrepresented management. The purpose of this salary resolution is to address the legislative impacts of both the California Minimum Wage increases and the Senate Bill five two five. Effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five, California Minimum Wage is increasing from sixteen dollars to sixteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, which is approximately a three percent increase. The classifications I listed earlier in the recommendation, which are also identified on the agenda, on the agenda item on file with the clerk, are currently below the minimum wage requirement and are recommended to be modified to be compliant. Also effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five, Senate Bill five two five establishes a new minimum wage for covered healthcare employees working for the county. This legislation impacts the public health and behavioral health departments, specifically applying to employees who provide patient care, health services, or support services related to healthcare delivery. In response to this new law and in collaboration with county council and the affected departments, a new job specification for the medical office receptionist, receptionist position was created. This roles for employees working in the front office of the clinics, performing a ride-range and medical clerical and administrative tasks to support clinical operations. Additionally, the medical assistant one-two position was consolidated into a single classification of medical assistant for employees who are performing routine healthcare service procedures and medical tasks in support of the clinics. To qualify, candidates must hold a valid medical assistant certificate from a California-approved training program, along with current first aid training and cardiopulmonary resuscitation certificates for adults, children, and infants, which must be maintained throughout employment. The job specifications are attached as amended to this item and have been shared with the union and to the clerk of the board. The employees identified on the agenda item will be reclassified as part of the SB five two five implementation, effective pay period one, two thousand and twenty-five, which is December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. This is, these position allocations will be updated in accordance with the reclassifications. The union and employees have been notified by Human Resources in advance of this action taking place. The cost to implement the salary resolution changes is approximately forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for the minimum wage impacts and eleven thousand, seventy-six dollars for the SB five two five impacts for the remainder of the year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Melissa. Any question or comments? You want to have a repeat that?
Yeah. Kind of dozed off there a little bit.
Fair enough.
Move is presented, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Valley.
Just for clarification, that was as amended.
As amended also, yeah.
Making sure. Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Okay, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item B, administration. We have Alec Walker. Morning, Alex.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. How are you doing today?
Good.
Wonderful. Alex Walker, Commissioner of Allen's Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is a resolution to adopt a defense fee schedule for the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Court, more commonly known as CARE Court or CARE Act Proceedings. In two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill thirteen thirty-eight into law, creating the CARE Court system. And in December first, two thousand and twenty-four, Kings County, as a cohort to county, successfully implemented and launched its CARE Court system. On November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, your board approved a sixty thousand funding agreement with the State Bar of California to provide legal counsel for representation in CARE Act proceedings and matters related to care agreements and care plans. As part of this funding agreement, the county would receive sixty thousand dollars and be expected to provide legal services to care respondents for a period of October first, two thousand and twenty-four, to January first, two thousand and twenty-six. This funding is expected to be received by the end of the calendar year. And the county currently does not have a public defender's office. Rather, administration through contracting with licensed qualified attorneys provides this service. And with the implementation of CARE Courts, once these funds are extinguished, the county would likely incur expenses based on the number of residents appointed a public defender for CARE Court proceedings. At this time, it has been confirmed that no petitions have been filed with the court. Pursuant to the Trial Court Funding Act, indigent defense services were designated as a county function in the state of California. Of the fifty-eight counties in California, thirty-three maintain public defender's offices, and Kings County is one of twenty-five that uses other means to fulfill this requirement. The county contracts with a panel of independently, of independent attorneys to provide indigent defense services, and these contracted attorneys have historically been paid a base amount for a specific contract type. And if an attorney was unable to perform a contract due to a conflict, it would be assigned to a different attorney. Claims are to be submitted within thirty days of specific milestones, as done with criminal case claims under Resolution Number two four zero three nine. Administration is recommending that the CARE Court fee schedule reflect the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour, which is the same rate for other case types listed with other ordinances with caps of one hundred and fifty dollars per hearing type as outlined in the CARE Act. This proposed resolution is retroactive because CARE Courts were launched on December first, two thousand and twenty-four, and the county has a retroactive agreement with the State Bar for these types of services. The county, as a recipient of, a recipient of these funds, again, must be available to appoint representation to respondents through the period of October twenty, sorry, October first, two thousand and twenty-four, to January first, two thousand and twenty-six. And as noted previously to your board, if CARE Courts continue to be expensive for a county without state funding, it will become an unfunded mandate. And if approved by the board, the scheduled fee will take effect on December first, two thousand and twenty-four, and will apply to all appointments made on or after this date. This fee schedule was designed to maximize the utilization of the sixty thousand dollars that the county will receive, and this resolution has been approved by county council as the form. Attached to the agenda packet is the full resolution. I appreciate your time and am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions for Alex? Nothing? Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nez. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on now to the next item, and Carrie Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Carrie Martinez, CAO. The upcoming vacancy in county council position effective January third requires action to ensure the county continues to receive legal services to address this. It is recommended the board approve a resolution to appoint Lori Avedisian Favini of LaZano Smith as interim county council effective January fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. LaZano Smith has provided supplemental legal services to the county for more than three years, offering expertise during staffing shortages and assisting with complex legal issues. Appointing Ms. Avedisian Favini ensures a seamless transition. Under the existing legal agreement, the service rate will be at two hundred and seventy-five per hour. The cost is already included in the fiscal year adopted budget. It is recommended the board adopt a resolution, appointing Ms. Avedini Favini as interim county council. Appreciate your time, and she is here in the audience if you'd like her to say a few words.
Thank you. Any, would like Lori? Say your name again.
Lori.
Lori.
That's funny. Any comments?
You, you want her to comment after the vote?
Well, as you see, we have, we have one retiring, and we want to wish Diane the best. We'll discuss that a little bit later on, but thank you, Diane, for your, your time here. And we wish you all the best in the future, and wherever life takes you and your travels go. I know you have extended family that you'd like to go see and do things, so as we get older, that come more important at work, so.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Move to confirm. Motion by Supervisor Nez. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Four in favor, one absent. Lori would like to.
Now, now that it's confirmed, maybe, yeah.
Lori Avedisian.
Favini.
Favini. Favini?
Yes, you said it correct. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I've had the pleasure of serving as outside counsel for Kings County for a few years now, working closely with county council and county administrative officer. And we look forward to continued service to this great community. With me also is my colleague, Mary Lerner, who will also say a few words.
Yes, so thank you, board, for this opportunity. We do look forward to working with all of you in this new capacity, and we're available for any questions.
Well, thank you very much. We need guidance most all the time. So I did ask Diane why she's leaving, and she said, well, I gave her two choices, and she picked the first one, which wasn't good. I said, you can take retire, retire our, our, our stuff. We have a good time here. It's just, you know, we got a couple of problem people on the board that we got to work with. You get to determine who they are.
You can pick.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, we'll move on now to board member comments. Joe, you want to start it off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy and I were the program.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Nevs. We actually have an item we pulled to the agenda that's from HSA. It's on the amended agenda.
That green one.
Yes. The cornerstone agenda item.
Yeah. That's on my desk. You didn't bring it? No, I didn't bring it.
You want a copy?
Well, we have, next item is going to be presented for the Cornerstone project from Wendy. Thank you, Wendy.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Wendy Ocikoffo, Director of Human Services Agency. Today, I'm requesting your approval of a second amendment to the takeover agreement with Cornerstone Community Alcohol and Other Drug Recovery Systems Incorporated. I'll be referring to as Cornerstone for the remainder of my presentation, for the Triangle Courtyard Home Key Project. On November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, HSA, in partnership with Cornerstone, received a four-point-three million dollar grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development under the project Home Key Program to fund the development of affordable housing on land owned by Cornerstone, called, and it was called the Triangle Courtyard Project. This project would increase permanent affordable housing inventory for Kings County and provide twenty-four two-bedroom homes, housing between thirty-six and forty-eight individuals. Kings County selected Green Galaxy Builders as a successful bidder and entered into an agreement on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, for complete design build services for not to exceed price of a little over four-point-eight million. Green Galaxy completed some of the underground site development and delivered twenty manufactured homes. However, Green Galaxy significantly delayed completion of the full project and ultimately refused to complete its contractual obligations. As a result, on October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, the agreement with Green Galaxy was terminated, and a takeover agreement with Cornerstone was approved by the board. At Cornerstone's request, the takeover agreement shifted the responsibility from the county to Cornerstone to complete the remainder of the project, as well as the financial responsibility to complete the remaining work needed, and assigned all rights and remedies against Green Galaxy to Cornerstone. At that time, Cornerstone indicated that they intended to pursue available remedies against the prior contractor. In June, two thousand and twenty-three, Cornerstone indicated that there was a budget shortfall that delayed completion of the twenty units, and an additional, additional funds were needed for the completion of four ADA units. The shortfall was attributed to four factors. One, an increased, increased expenses due to repairing work improperly done by Green Galaxy. Two, damage due to the twenty-two, twenty-three winter storms. Three, cost of the four ADA units, and four, Green Galaxy's refusal to return approximately a little over five hundred thousand in funds advanced under their contract but not yet expended. At that time, Cornerstone had not initiated any efforts for recruitment of these funds or for the additional damages from Green Galaxy, but did indicate that they would once the project was complete. In August, two thousand and twenty-three, Cornerstone was awarded three hundred thousand in housing and homeless incentive program funds from our two local health plans, and construction resumed on the project. In December, two thousand and twenty-three, work was once again paused by Cornerstone due to insufficient funds to complete the project. HSA worked closely with Cornerstone on strategies to obtain additional funding. Numerous options were explored, including donations, loans, and grants. Unfortunately, Cornerstone was not successful in securing additional funding. Despite, despite Cornerstone's obligation to fund the project to completion, on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the board approved an amendment to the takeover agreement with Cornerstone to aid in project completion. With the First Amendment, the county agreed to provide additional funding from our homeless housing assistance and prevention funds, grant funds that we receive in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand and, but not to exceed six hundred and sixty-five thousand. In return, Cornerstone agreed to continue to provide the balance of necessary funding to complete the project, increase the scope of work to include the four eighty-eight units, and complete the work on the first twenty units by April thirtieth, and the four eighty-eight units by July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. These deadlines were not met. In August, two thousand and twenty-four, financial circumstances developed for Cornerstone, which resulted in a work stoppage at the project site. Over the past few months, the county has been actively assisting Cornerstone with the assessment and resolution of the work stoppage and possible alternatives. While there are additional items to be worked through in the coming months, both parties have agreed that this amendment that's before you today for the takeover agreement is the first step in the county and Cornerstone's evolving strategy, strategy for completion of the project. Cornerstone has indicated that they do not have the financial resources to pursue remedies against Green Galaxy. These remedies were assigned to them largely as a means to be reimbursed for their anticipated financial investment in the project's completion. As that has not occurred, they have agreed to return those rights to the county so that we may hold the contractor accountable and pursue any remedies available. Therefore, in order to move forward in resolution of this matter, HSA is seeking board approval of the Second Amendment to the takeover agreement with Cornerstone. This amendment will allow HSA to pursue all available remedies against the prior contractor, Green Galaxy. Additionally, the amendment will allow HSA unrestricted access to the Triangle Courtyard property for any and all activities related to project completion, including but not limited to assessment and or inspection of the site, provision of security at the site, and work performance at the site to facilitate project completion. This amendment has no impact on the County General Fund. It has been reviewed and approved by county council as a form. I do want to let you know the amendment has not been approved by risk management, as Cornerstone has not provided an updated copy of their certificate of insurance in time for today's meeting. Despite that, we are seeking your approval of this amendment, as the timeline for pursuing available remedies is critical, and today is the last board meeting of two thousand and twenty-four. We will work with Cornerstone's council to ensure they obtain and provide the necessary proof of insurance requirement as provided in the original, as required in the original contract. Today, we are seeking your approval of the Second Amendment to the takeover agreement with Cornerstone Community Alcohol and Other Drug Recovery Systems Incorporated to gain unrestricted access to the Triangle Courtyard property and to reassign all rights and remedies against Green Galaxy Builders to the county. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Wendy? So move. I got motion by Supervisor Nez. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Any questions, comments? Only thing is, is the insurance. Once we have it in our control, we get our own insurance.
Yeah, we will need to talk about that, but I, once it's in our control, I would assume that would be our responsibility.
So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Thank you.
Favor. Thank you, Wendy. Thanks for all the extra work you've done, too. I know it's not in your job description, and you inherited it, but we do appreciate the hard work you've done. And it hasn't been easy, so thank you. Okay, we'll go on now to board member comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going off with the digital.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got to use paper once in a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kathy and I was a program at the Hanford Breakfast Lions on December eleventh. We had a great time, great breakfast. Certainly want to thank the Hanford Breakfast Lions for that. Special Waste Management and Recycling held their last meeting in two thousand and twenty-four. We reviewed all the budget reports, planned projects, and update on operations, and the two thousand and twenty-five meeting calendar was also approved. The Kings County Area Public Transit Agency held a special meeting that wrapped up the year as well by reviewing and accepting the annual audits and agreement with enterprise contract, which extends it to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-seven. Which extends it to December thirty first of two thousand twenty seven and amended. Approved the replacement of the compressed natural gas compressor. The Transit Center project continues to work with Southern Cal Edison easements and change orders. As well as adopting the two thousand twenty five median calendar. We have had about forty four. Change orders, but we've just about reached our saturation limit. So I think that's, that was probably. I knew we would have some because that part of Hanford is an older part of Hanford and all of the underground stuff was not really well mapped or understood. But I didn't think we'd have by forty four. So, but we're, we're just about to that limit. The, the special Kings County Association of Governments also concluded two thousand twenty four with a meeting on December eleventh. The two thousand twenty five, twenty six overall work plan was reviewed. And we'll come back to that board in two thousand twenty five for adoption. Requested some audit extensions to enable to provide financials. So that's been for ninety days. And the two thousand twenty five calendar was adopted. And a couple of more area wide planning grants were also reviewed and approved. Continue to make Santa visits. We're twenty nine down on the list and a little over twenty to go. I, my wife says I, I get grumpy after fifty. I don't know if she means Santa visits or when I turn fifty years old.
I think when you turn fifty.
Yeah, probably. That's what I'm kind of thinking because, and so I have to take them off the top of the list just to keep the list less than fifty to make her happy, so. With that, I want to wish everyone a very merry Christmas and a happy new year. Hope all of you have a safe and healthy Christmas and New Year and we look forward to seeing you. Two thousand twenty five already. I just, just barely threw out my Y two K. You know, T shirts. So now, yeah, twenty five years later, we're still here. Thank you very much.
Yeah, where's your complaint department for Santa Claus?
Yeah.
I have not, I'm not on high on his list, but I should be getting something. I mean, I do a little bit.
You didn't appreciate the thong underwear?
Yeah, I did not. No one else did either.
I thought you liked that speedo.
Oh, no, no, we're good.
You said you wanted clothes.
All right.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, so Merry Christmas to everyone and best wishes for a happy new year. Let's get a wrap up another year here at the board. I think the county as a whole is moving forward in positive directions. So I think it was a good year. That being said, I do want to put some, take time just to remember a good friend to Kings County. Somebody who was here serving a long time. Under the Chris Com Company is our lobbyist for many years, but for those of you who knew Carol Saran. She passed away last week. Yeah, she did thirty years with Chuck Jalloy building that lobbying firm, building Chris Com. They've rented an office in Corcoran for the last twenty one plus years. And so it was sad news to, to hear recently that Carol passed. So checked in with Chuck Jalloy yesterday, touched base with him and offered any assistance. And I'll be attending her services Thursday in Chatsworth.
Give her a best for us.
I will, I will do that. So, but Carol has played a big role in a lot of the money that we got here to the county. Along with Chuck and she's well known, respected in the capital, not only in California. But also in the legislature in Arizona where most of their clients are at. So prayers for Carol's family and.
So I'll have it. Sorry to hear that. Thank you. Supervisor Robinson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, this week I met with the grand jury. Also attended Hanford Christians Christmas concert, so shout out to Ms. Banta for what she did with the kids. The, the concert was phenomenal. I can't get my kid to take out the trash. And she got three hundred kids to, to have, give a really nice presentation. Also attended the Carnegie Museum fundraiser with my wife at the Civic Auditorium. So grateful to Southern California Edison for getting the lights back on. A couple of transformers blew. And it only took them an hour and they had it all back up. Also met with analyst Alex Walker for Zoom meeting with Paragon, our federal lobbyist, went over two thousand twenty five priorities. And attended ribbon cutting with supervisors for Boone and Nevs yesterday at the juvenile hall facility. So congrats to, to Leonard Baker for that. And Merry Christmas and, and thank you this year since I'm, since I'm a relatively new guy. Thank you for everybody that's helped me out this year and helped me along with the various projects.
You're on your own next year.
I, yep.
Supposed to be, yeah.
If he can get three votes.
Yeah.
Or if he can get two more.
That's our part.
I'd like to thank supervisor for goodness for filling in for me last week at the.
Yes.
CAR and K C A G. This is his last meeting. He's not here. He's got some family issues he's taken care of, but we do appreciate the work he's done for us for the last sixteen. I was at Sacramento at a rural caucus, rural county meeting. And a going away party for about five of our fellow board members. One had a, actually had a presentation that evening before. Had about two hundred and fifty people show up in Loomis, very well liked gentleman. Also been working on the broadband stuff and we were awarded. I think John Devlin, twenty five million dollars on Friday evening, about three thirty. Money's going to go to Comcast and A T and T for the rural, rural counties, areas for the, I think Avonale and Kettlemann. So that's a good deal. We thought we, on the. On Wednesday, we didn't think we had that money and then on Friday we got it, so that's good. And what else I got? Groundbreaking, I mean, ribbon, ribbon cutting for the facility for Leonard Baker. Appreciate that. That's been. Think we worked on that for at least my fourteen years. I think Chief Brown worked on it before that. And we were able to get that completed, which is a, a good feat because the state kept trying to take away that from us all the time, so that's a good thing. And I do wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. A hopeless prosperous, leave politics out of your family dinners if you can.
Unless you want to lessen the attendance.
Yeah.
Which might be some of the, yeah. Might be the intent.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and go on now to board correspondence.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for board correspondence, there is none. For upcoming events, Behavioral Health will host its Mental Health Family Member Support Group tonight, Tuesday, December seventeenth. From five thirty to seven thirty here on campus at the Kings Building. Kings County Library will host its storytime this Thursday, December eighteenth from three to four at the Hanford Branch Library. And for upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for January seventh. This will be our. Today will be our last meeting and the seventh will be our first meeting. So community development has an item regarding the reporting of the planning commission. Health has two items, an M O U with some medical managed care plan. In agreement with Fresno Ministry and Human Resources has one item for suspend competition for behavioral health. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And then we're going to go to close session as presented, but we also, before we adjourn, we have one comment to make and I'm going to turn to council or staff.
Did we want to strike that last sentence from the adjournment?
So, Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out that we are pulling the item for closed session on threat litigation for Kings County Juvenile Center.
And just for the record, I would like to strike the last sentence under adjournment where it says. Most county offices will be closed on Friday, December twentieth, twenty twenty four at twelve P M. And will reopen Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty five at eight A M. We'll strike that from the record.
Okay, thank you. And we'll adjourn and we'll be back here at eleven A M for California Public Finance Authority meeting. Thank you and enjoy your holidays.